Ta.
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Manzo.
I'm here.
Councilmember Doe.
I'm here.
Councilmember. Councilmember Ho is with us via Zoom. Councilmember Nguyen. And for the Citizens Oversight Committee Measure SS, Chair Carey. Committee Member Lawrence. Committee Member Pearson. Committee Member Piker. There are quarms of both the City Council as well as the Citizens Oversight Committee Mayor.
Who says them?
Councilmember Ho, can you please unmute yourself and speak? To unmute yourself on the phone is star six six.
Okay. Yes, I'm here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. So next salute to the flag will be Vice Mayor Manzo invocation will be our committee member Mark Lawrence.
Please join me in saluting our nation's flag. Ready, begin.
Congratulations to the flag.
Congratulations to the flag.
Which stands my nation. In justice for all.
Amen. Thank you Vice Mayor Manzo and Committee Member Lawrence. Next, we have report from Steve Club. Any report?
No, Mayor, I don't have any reports at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have auto communication for mayors on agenda. Let's open.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have one speaker at this time, Terry Rains. And just so that I'm. So this is the time for members of the audience wishing to speak to the council or to the Oversight Committee to come forward and speak for five minutes. We did not have any early submittals, and at this time, we have one member currently present, and there's another person via Zoom at the conclusion.
Good afternoon, everyone. Terry Rains, Westminster. I am still reeling over the fact this council had very little to say and provided no real direction other than let's go with the status quo budget and let's have a budget study session when this revised budget was first presented on May 25. Last week, I sent an email to city staff with input on that presentation and suggestions for this study session, including, one, when staff presents potential cuts for consideration, each proposed cut must have a fully inclusive dollar amount attached to it in the presentation. Otherwise, how can staff expect the city council to provide direction on specific cuts? And council and the public should know who came up with the potential cuts and impacts. How were the, how much were the department heads involved? Was there in-depth discussion and agreement? None of this was done at the May 25 meeting, and cuts aren't even on the table for this meeting per council direction. Two, provide detailed variances analysis with documented reasons written out for significant budget variances in each department, the reason amount and percentages. This should be required from every department head on a quarterly basis embedded by the Finance Department and city leadership. This was not done on May 25 or for today's meeting. Three, the council requested a by-line item budget study session, and that is exactly what staff should provide with detailed narrative in layman's terms. Council members are not financial professionals. I also suggested a more engaging and animated presentation that would spark serious discussion, debate, and direction with less of the dry spreadsheets or reading from PowerPoint presentations word for word. I also suggested staff include the PowerPoint presentation in the staff report for council to study ahead of time with a blank section for notes and questions in each major section to jot down concerns in preparation for this meeting. Council would then be able to study bullet point slides on their own time versus reading hundreds of pages of financial reports. This was not done on May 25 or for today's meeting. I also suggested the scope of the Citizens Oversight Measure SS Committee be expanded to include in-depth review and analysis of the city's financial statements and budgets, and for the committee to present related findings and make recommendations to council on how how to improve the financial health of the organization. This has not been done. My suggestions are not intended as criticism. I am merely trying to offer ideas to help staff get what they need, and that is for this council, department heads and residents to fully understand the city's budget and financial position and to facilitate change and direction where needed. Today's staff report doesn't even mention the $17 million annual loss of revenue due to Measure SS sunsetting. The words bankruptcy and insolvency, they're missing too. Do staff and council really think that by ignoring this grim reality, it will go away? Talk about fiscal mismanagement. My private sector career was in corporate budgeting, not just directing the creation and management of budgets, but specifically training and engaging all levels of management to take ownership in the budgeting process and the financial health of the organization. The key was speaking to department heads and executives in their individualized language and style. In my roles, I also had to present grim realities and suggest cuts and layoffs. When it comes to finances, effective communication in layman's terms will always yield the best results. Some questions I asked at the May 25 meeting regarding the status quo revised budget. One, why does Fund 231, the American Rescue Plan, show no expenses and an ending fund balance of 23.7 million? Other cities have already established spending plans for these funds and incorporated them into their budgets. Why haven't we? Two, why are the legal fees and human resources up 400%? Three, why is Stanton's animal control contract revenue decreasing, not increasing, even with the new full-time position and built-in contract increases? I think the chief was researching that one for me. And four, why is bus shelter rental income down 65%? Folks, welcome to the city's dire fiscal emergency brought to you by this council's ignorance and asinine refusal to let us vote on extending the tax measure back in 2020 or even now. A year ago, on June 9, 2021, all five of you approved a resolution declaring a fiscal emergency, but you've done absolutely nothing since then. At the March 14 meeting, you all ignored the dire reality presented to you with no discussion other than Ho placing blame and responsibility back on us, the residents and city employees. It doesn't take a financial genius to do the math here. With this status quo budget and no tax measure renewal, the city will be bankrupt in two years. Let that sink in for a minute. Bankrupt in just two years. All because Ford Chicken SH blank T council members are more worried about their political careers than our city's survival. Your direction to go with the status quo budget, including the much-deserved employee raises, no cuts, and not letting us vote on the tax measure, ensures your legacy will be bankrupting this city. Either step up or step out. Screw you, council. Stop destroying our city. And I take note that Councilman Nguyen is not present, and Councilwoman Ho could not be in her person for the most important meeting this year. Thank you.
There is no one else present wishing to speak, but we do have someone on Zoom.
Hi. I'd like to take a quick minute to talk to the council in regards to the fact that on your measure committee, you have a wonderful lady. Her name is Diana Carey. She used to be a council member. She was, and I believe she still is, correct me if I'm wrong, on a school board as well. She is well aware of how budgets work. She's well aware of staying within the green and yellow for the upcoming years rather than in the red, which I believe we are for at least two of the three years. When I looked over the report from staff, I couldn't help remember when I saw that type of same report in regards to our Westminster School District back when I first got on the board there. It's, you guys are facing really, really hard times. I mean, it's not, it's not something to obviously take lightly. Looking at the first graph, like I didn't even have to go far in that staff report. That first graph alone told me all I needed to know. If something is not done and done, I mean, in my opinion, done today or at the next meeting, this city is, is cruising for a bruising, I guess is what they say. You know, it's not, it's not going to be good whatsoever. Anytime you see that much of a deficit in what you're going to be able to pay out, like that, I'm just, I'm in shock. And I'm also a little bit in shock, well, not a little bit, let's, let's be honest, a lot in shock of the fact that we have so little funds in the reserve for the city. Your, your reserve should be kind of like the OSHIT, you know, account. That's when, you know, something like this happens, and you need to cover, like, let's say, a year or part of a year, but not that you need to cover three years of not having enough funds to pay out. I, I feel like the city has been using the reserve, really the count, not the city per se, but the council has been using the reserve as like an overdraft protection for the general fund, and that's not how it should be at all. So I really feel like council needs to sit down today and really figure some stuff out because at this point, extending the Measure SS will help a little, but I don't even think it's going to help for those further two and three years. You guys really need to do something and not, not little peon stuff. I mean, not, you know, oh, we can have a, what a, you know, like, really get serious, council members. You're going to lose your positions. You, like, this is not good. Listen to your city manager. Listen to the staff. It's time to get real. Let's step it up. Thanks.
If there's anyone else wishing to speak via Zoom, this would be the time to raise your hand. Mayor, we have one other person. Camila Overbeek. You may, you may begin.
Good afternoon, council. You know, Terry covered a good portion of all of this, and so what I really want to say is that I hope for the sake of this city and for everyone who's been begging and pleading with you that you all at least sat down and reviewed everything. By and large, what seems to happen is you guys show up to these meetings and rely on, on the reports, but you don't ever do anything on your own. You don't do anything outside of this. And it appears that residents are doing your work for you. And that's not okay. We're begging for relief here. We're begging to solve the problem, and you all are choosing to bury your heads in sand. Ignoring the problem is not going to make it go away. We need viable sources of income and revenue to come into the city. We can't keep granting tax breaks for people. We can't keep avoiding the fact that you need to let voters decide whether our tax stays what it is with Measure SS or if we're going to let it go. And stop with the BS of, I don't raise taxes. No one's asking you to raise taxes. You're asked, what we're asking is for you to allow us to vote to keep our taxes where they are so that perhaps we have a slight chance for a year or two more. But honestly, Terry's absolutely correct with, right now, your legacy is, I let the city go bankrupt. And all of you should be ashamed of yourselves. Honestly, we did not elect you for this BS. Mayor Ta, you, you're part of the reason that we're in this position. You wanted a sunset clause. Now you've got it, and now we're broke. Perhaps you should start giving up your pay because the residents deserve more than what you're giving. Thank you.
If anyone else is wishing to speak, this would be the time to raise your hand via Zoom. Mayor, no one else is raising their hand, so that concludes oral communications at this time.
Thank you so much. With that, I close auto communication, and next we have fiscal year '22 to '23 revised budget study section, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Committee Members. I'm Erin Bax, Finance Director, and I'm going to give a short presentation on the status quo budget, and then staff is available to answer any questions. Okay, so three, or three budget versions were presented to the City Council on May 25. We had a status quo version, version one and two. Both version one and two presented the City Council with options using less reserves but included significant cuts to staff and service levels. Per council direction, this study session was scheduled to provide for more detailed discussion regarding the proposed budget at only the status quo level. So the city budget is structured by funds, programs, and objects. Funds are the highest level, and I believe everybody's heard of the general fund, so it's the main operating fund of the city. Following that, we have programs, and programs are grouped by department within each fund. And after that, we have objects. Objects are separated by revenue and expenditures. And this slide shows the categories that we use for expenditures. So salary and benefits are salary and personnel costs associated with compensation, retirees' payments, and employee-related administration, insurance, and claims costs. We also have operations and maintenance, and in that category are operating costs, including contractual, legal, supplies, training and meeting, vehicle use charges, uniforms, postage, utility costs, phone, phone bills, water and licensing fees, also our water ground pumping costs. The next category is capital outlay and other, which is mostly capital improvement projects and purchases of equipment, and depreciation, which is an accounting method used to allocate the costs of an asset over its useful life. We have debt service, which is interest and principal related to outstanding debt issuances of the city. And then we have administrative charges and transfers, which are overhead charges between funds and transfers between funds. There's also bad debt expense in this last category. So this chart shows the budget broken down by fund type. The general fund is the largest fund within the city, and it's 74 million or 58%. Water is next at 15 million or 12%. So the general fund revised budget is, well, like I said earlier, the general fund is a primary operating fund of the city, and it accounts for all general tax receipts and fee revenue not allocated by law. This version maintains all service levels and no cuts. Originally, the '22-'23 budget was adopted in June of '21 and used 10.5 million of reserves. This revised status quo budget uses 9.2 million of reserves. All right, so this chart shows the current year estimate, and we're looking to end the year with a $3.4 million contribution to fund balance. Revenues are coming in higher than projected, and expenditures are coming in lower, mostly due to vacancies. And then the next version, or the next column, which says '22-'23 adopted, was the budget version that was adopted in June of last year. Then the green column is the status quo budget, so the changes for the new version are the revised budget. And then we show three years of projections. And in the status quo budget, after using 9.2 million of reserves for the '22-'23 fiscal year, we end with 29 million in reserves, and then you can see from the three years of projections, we are out of money in two years or '24-'25. So now I'll focus a little more on the general fund. This pie chart shows the breakup of the revenue in the general fund, which is budgeted at 64.8 million. The majority of the revenue comes from taxes, followed by service charges at 8% and investment and rental at 2%. Tax revenue, 55 million, is made up of the different sources on this page. Sales tax being the largest at 36%, followed by property tax at 34%. The locally generated transaction use tax, Measure SS revenue, is 16% and reflects half a year receipts as it expires in December of the current year. This chart, or this slide recaps what we've received from Measure SS to date. So to, by the end of the fiscal year, or actually the calendar year, we'll have received 81.5 million or estimate, estimated at 81.5 million. It's, this revenue source has seen a 38% growth since its first full year, 2017-18, and it's actually growing at a faster rate than our general sales tax, which was at 19%. The loss of Measure SS may result in other tax measures without local control. The state of California has a limit of 10.75 for sales tax rates. Orange County has a base rate of 7.25 with an additional 2% allowed. OCTA has secured half of that, or half percent of that, leaving 1.5%. The city currently has one of that 1.5, but again, this ends in December of '22. So this chart shows the cities with transaction use taxes, just for reference. These are Orange County cities, but I'd like to note also that LA County has a base rate of 9.5% and the majority of the cities in LA County are 10.25%. So Fountain Valley has 8.75, as does Garden Grove and La Palma. La Habra's 8.25, Lo Sal was 9.25, Placentia 8.75, San Ana 9.25, Seal Beach 8.75, and Stanton, and of course Westminster at 8.75.
Before you go on, on this slide, I think you spoke about it, on some of these other cities, do you know which ones are the ones that pay, that don't pay for fire out of their general fund? Because we pay for the fire from what we get, right?
We do pay for fire from what we get.
Because even though some of those other cities are smaller, they don't pay for the, for fire from this.
That's correct, and I, I don't know, does Ron, do you by chance know which ones pay, which ones of these are structural? Uh huh.
Yes, so Mr. Mayor Protem, you're looking at La Palma and what was the other one I said? Lo Sal, I'm sorry. Yeah, those are, those two are structural fire fund.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that.
So they pay, their fire services paid from their taxes. They don't pay it. Like, we pay our fire services out of the general fund. They don't. So their, their taxes are covering, or an allocation is, is covering it, so they're not paying it out of the general fund. There's quite a few that actually are structural fire cities that don't, but they're not, they don't have a transaction use tax. Yeah, just those, just those two that he mentions have, have the transaction use tax and don't pay the fire services out of the general fund. That's correct. Sure.
Thank you. Just clarify that cities are kind of, I don't know where the break is in terms of, there's cash contract cities, and then there's these ones that have agreed a long time ago to put it on the property tax in addition to the, the normal property tax that we pay. So they're paying that in addition already. That money then, like Irvine would be a good example. They, they have a property tax that pays for their fire. And I think a number of South County cities are doing the same thing. They're, so they, the thing with Westminster is that our property tax is so low that I think there's only a couple cities that might be as low or around about where we are, but all of those cities have fire paid for with the property tax in addition. So we're kind of at the lowest level.
If I may, just for a minute, for a moment. When people speak into the mics, please, these are unilateral speak mics. So if you can, please directly speak into the mic and make sure that the green button is on when you speak. That way, we can capture everything for the speakers at home as well. Thank you.
Could I say something that relates to that? We are the lowest in the county as far as what we get back on our property taxes, and I believe we're the second lowest in the state. And for the people at home, you know, watching, what that means is for every $100 that you pay in property tax, the city gets back $7.36. So on a $500,000 home, where you were paying $5,000 in property tax, the city would get back $368. So we are at a huge, huge disadvantage as far as, you know, getting money back to be able to support our services. And I know that when people ask me about that, and they're always just totally amazed and say, well, that's not right. We should go change that. You know, that rate was set in 1978 with Proposition 13. And so in order to change that rate, the whole entire state would have to vote on it. And so we all know that that is not going to happen. So that, that's just a little history on why that rate is so low. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh huh. I'm going to move on to some, just the changes between the adopted budget and what's being proposed. So the revised '22-'23 budget, revenue projections have increased 3.7 million. So you can go back one, please. Yeah, thank you. Of that, sales tax projections are increased 1.7 million. The transaction use tax or Measure SS is up 1.5 million. Property tax up 222,000 or 223,000. Utility users tax up 180,000. License and permits up 75,000. Other revenue up 63,000. Fines 49,000. Property transfer 45. Charges for service 34,000. Franchise fees are decreased 140,000, and intergovernmental, intergovernmental revenue is down 49,000. Now we'll move on to expenditures of, general fund expenditures are proposed at 74 million. Of that, police or public safety is, is the majority, but police is 51% at 38 million, and fire is 23% at 17.6 million. Public Works is next at 5.9 million or 8%. The changes to the expenditures between the adopted budget and the proposed budget are 2.4 million. Salaries and benefits are up 2.7 million. Government building charges for the entire general fund up 613,000. Vehicle charges up 298,000. Purse costs for unfunded liability 215,000. Legal costs are up 184,000. Contractual 135,000. Supplies 31,000. Special department 25,000. Repairs for building and equipment 24,000. All other operations and maintenance costs up 9,600. CIP transfers. CIP transfers. So when we took the budget for adoption last year, it included a million five transfer from the general fund to capital projects to fund street improvements. But because there's surplus or contribution to reserves in the current fiscal year, we're recommending moving that million five to 2122 to help offset 2223. OCFA contract is down 272,000 and other funds, the charges and offsets are down 84,000.
Erin, on this, on that slide, can you explain what the governmental building charges?
Sure. So, and I'll get to this in a little bit, but we have internal service funds and those fund the, the operation costs for different services in the city. So building maintenance covers all of the buildings for the city and the supplies, the maintenance, the cleaning and charges, and Jay can speak to that later, but charges are up, supply costs are up. And another thing that we've done in the internal service funds, when the fund balance is over 500,000, we've reduced the charges to help offset the general fund. And because costs in there are up, those, we can't reduce those costs anymore. So these reflect more of an actual charge versus offsetting and using some of the fund balances, which is what we've done in the prior couple fiscal years. So it's maintenance of city buildings, basically.
So it's just maintenance. Okay. All right. Thank you.
I have a question. Kimberly. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes. You mentioned OCFA has been reduced, or is it 200, is it used to 250,000?
Correct. So the contract allows 4.5% increase and I believe it came in at, I believe it's 2.47. Let me check. 2.42%. So we were able to reduce the budget by that amount.
So how do we determine that? What percentage to increase by?
OCFA provides that calculation.
I see. I see. Okay. Thank you.
The next category of funds are special revenue funds. And the revenue sources, these revenue sources are legally restricted and otherwise assigned for specific purposes. So an example of special, special revenue funds are park dedication, gas tax, measure M, CDBG, home, family resource center, AQMD, and, and special police grants. Total revenue for special revenue, total revenue for special revenue, that's a lot of revenues, but it's 27.7 million with expenditures at 16.1 million. The big difference there is the ARPA funds. And staff will return to council at a later date for allocation of that money. But we're set to get the second half of that money here pretty soon, which is 11.8 million.
Yes, I have a question about a special revenue fund. So basically this funding came from the state?
It comes from a lot of sources, state, federal, but, but it's, it's restricted. So it can only be used for what the intent is.
Thank you.
Ask a question. So does this mean that once these funds are no longer, the grant runs out, then that means that there are no more funds coming in? And so these programs will no longer be funded?
Correct. Except for some of them do have annual allocations, like CDBG and gas tax do have annual allocations and continue.
But there are some that are going to lose that funding and those programs will no longer exist, unless they're able to find additional or new sources of income, correct?
Most of those ones that I just mentioned have ongoing revenue sources, but a lot of the police grants are one-time in nature. Yep.
Erin, do any of those funds have to be given back? I know this is a little bit off the subject, but with our, when we lost our redevelopment funds, I mean, we had to give back, I don't know, 50 or 60 million dollars. So I think my, my question is, you know, when you have some special funds that are coming in, if you don't spend them by a certain time, I mean, do you have to give that money back?
Yes. Most of them, I believe. We do reports. CDBG requires it, gas tax requires it, measure M, to make sure that we're spending it in a timely manner. And if not, we do have to return them.
Thank you.
So as long as, as long as we have a project, we allow to use the funding. So before we apply for any funding, we need to, we need to show them the project that we have. Am I correct?
On some of them, yes. On the street projects, yes, we apply for the grants.
And measure M funding is not the annual funding. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
We haven't had any, yeah, let me ask. We haven't had to return any money, right? Because we have unused.
Other than redevelopment, we, we did return that and very rarely, I think there might be a little bit that have, that's been returned on some grants that are one-time in nature, but I can't think of anything off the top of my head.
Well, we want to make sure we don't do that.
Right. And I, the one I'm thinking of, it was something like $300 and it was
I see.
A long time ago. It was not a large amount of money. We do try to spend all of that.
Okay.
I was just going to add that there's a, under state law, there's a Fee Mitigation Act, which requires that, like the park dedication funds, or when we take those kinds of fees, we have to expend them within a certain period of time and we have to account for them, or we, we can't, yeah, we can't keep collecting them. We have to return it.
Got it. Thank you.
And that goes with, I, I know there was some, I guess we should expand. A good, good thing we're talking about that because I know there were some folks in the community who didn't understand when we, with their last, when we allocated some funds for playground equipment. And those we, and that, that comes into play, correct, that we need to spend those funds in order to make sure that we use them and don't have to give them back.
That's correct.
So are we in danger right now? I mean, we're on track with everything that we do have, the special revenue that we're spending and have projects in the works for that?
Yes, we do. And we do, and I believe it's called a timeliness use test and we do have to file those reports with the different agencies and we are in compliance and we are spending, we're not in danger of losing anything.
All right. Thank you.
And Christian, come here and sit down on one of the empty seats or? Is that appropriate or no? Oh, is that right? Okay.
Okay. So the next funds we're going to talk about are the water funds. And water is made up of three funds, the, the main water utility fund, conservation fund and capital projects. So revenue for all three of these budgeted at 23.2 million. That does include a transfer in and an offsetting transfer out of basically the same amount between the capital projects. But the majority of the revenue in this fund comes from charges for service and the majority of expenditures are for pump and basin assessment at 4.5 million, salaries and benefits at 4 million, purchase water at 2.7 million. The last water rate increase was in February of '21 and included five years of rate adjustments. Internal service funds are used to account for the financing of goods or services provided by one department to another department in the city. And they're funded by department charges on a cost reimbursement basis. The city has five internal service funds, motor pool, general benefits, liability, information systems and government buildings. The total budget, revenue and expenditures are each at 11.4 million. Motor pool and government buildings are below the minimum fund balance policy level of 500,000, mostly due to increases in supply costs for government buildings and vehicles like fuel. And also how I mentioned earlier, we had been charging lower rates to use up some of the fund balance to help the general fund. These both should be back above the minimum by the, by next fiscal year. And finally, this is just a summary of the capital projects that are included in the budget. $10.7 million of recommended capital projects for the next fiscal year. They're funded with grants, special revenue accounts, water funds, and a million five from the general fund that's going to, or recommended to be transferred from the current fiscal year. 7 million goes to infrastructure and street improvements. 2.5 million for water system improvements and park renovations at 600,000. City buildings at 250,000. Storm drains at 200,000. And that concludes my presentation, but we're available, staff's available to answer any questions that you might have.
Really appreciate your presentation. So any comment or any question from a committee member or a member on the city council, is it a time for you to ask?
I have a quick question. You mentioned that you're going to recommend that 1.5 to be transferred over. Can you speak? So we understand. So that 1.5 is savings and from where?
The current, okay. So the current year, the 2122 estimate is a savings of 3.4 million. That's actually after the million five transfer out. So we had increases in revenue. So revenue is coming in higher than budgeted and expenditures are coming in lower. So rather transfer the, the funding for that million five of street improvements in the current fiscal year versus next year when we're already short. So the savings, so even after that transfer, we're still showing about a $3.4 million surplus for the 2122 fiscal year.
And moving over how you recommend they were in compliance with, is there other, the revenues for those are specific revenues, right, from?
General fund.
Those general fund.
So it can go to, and I can tell you the streets, the projects that are being recommended to be funded with those are citywide residential street improvements at a million four and Magnolia Street, city limits to Edinger at 100,000. That makes up the million five.
And do we, have you, have you seen the condition of those particular streets? And if there's something that needs to be done?
Yes. Vice Mayor, the, the 1.4 for the residential, this is our citywide. Every year that we follow our payment management plans and look at the conditions. So these will recommend for overlay as well as slurry. For the second project, which is Magnolia Street, from the city limits to Edinger, this is just a, one of the fund, because we do receive several funds from OCTA and this is just kind of a match so, so we can make up the difference on increasing costs.
And if you don't make up the difference, and so we wouldn't, Orange County Transit would not fund us, give us those grants to do those.
That won't be enough to do the project.
But my question is, is that, are there, are those streets that have to be done? I mean, are they in poor condition that they, they must?
Absolutely. Specifically Magnolia in this segment, pretty much from the 405 to Edinger, then dire improvements. We've been postponed until the freeway project to be completed and so we can do that improvements.
Thank you.
I have a question. Yeah. So my question, I just want to clarify when I'm looking at the budget. So I didn't realize I could ask questions while you were presenting. So then we will be bankrupt in two years, as was presented by the speaker earlier. So according to this, there will be no reserves. If all the reserves are used, then by 2024, 25, we will be bankrupt and there will be no money in the city. If we continued on the current path, yes. And that's not with a chance. And that also takes into account the?
The loss of the measure, correct. The current, or the 2223 budget includes half a year. So six months, 8 million, 8.7 million. But the future three years that were shown on that slide do not include any transaction tax.
So then what is the plan for not having bankruptcy within our city? What is being proposed by, I guess this question is to the city council members. What is being done?
Well, for myself, speaking for myself, I mean, I, I see that the dire situation we're in. And to me, it's pretty obvious what needs to be done. It's not our decision of whether SS should be renewed. But to me, that's the community's decision. And to me, this is an important enough issue that the community should decide. And that's how I personally feel about it. So I want to, from, like again, speaking for myself, I want to make sure the community does have that opportunity. It's not for me to take away their opportunity to vote. So. But in our, in our situation, we have to come up with other, other ideas of coming up with revenue because I'm, I'm sure I'll let staff here maybe speak about this is that with the measure SS that we've had since 2016, it's pretty obvious to me that that was just keeping us afloat, that was just letting us operate. If you drive around our city, you'll see that we haven't really done much as far as redevelopment and beautification projects around our community. The SS was just, they didn't just keep the lights on, basically. And I think it's up to us to, to add to that. I mean, and we've had some, our last meeting, the staff came up with some creative ideas. And I think our council was pretty, really supportive of that. And we need to take those, see where those will take us. And if there, there are some ideas that we can bring to fruition to help because currently, just the current SS is not, is not, is not helping us. It's, it's helping us to keep the lights on, but it's not helping us to improve our community. So. I hope I answered that.
Yes. Today is the study meeting. So I'm, I'm really sure that all the members of the council, we have, we have some common idea, but this is not a meeting that we, we come up with a decision. But I, we really appreciate to listen to all the comments from the member fund, from the committee and from the community, yes.
I thought the purpose of this was for us to look at and review the budget so that we can ask questions and get solutions.
Of course, of course, of course.
So then my question again comes back to, if the purpose of this meeting is to actually get feedback and to figure out what is the budget going to look like for the next couple of years, what is your plan? As I think as a citizen of Westminster, as a resident of Westminster, I should say, the question is, how are you going to make sure that our city does not become bankrupt?
Our city council, we will have, yes. I appreciate that. Our city council, we will have, I think, another study for our budget probably next.
So what kind of, I mean, what would the study actually entail that you don't already know right now?
So basically, I think that, I believe that at that meeting, you know, all members of the council, we asked our department head more detail about expenditure and the revenue in the future because we do have another, another study meeting Monday, yes.
So what else did you need to know?
I'm sorry. Let me, let me jump, let me jump in. So the purpose of this meeting is for, so the direction was provided by the city council. They wanted to evaluate the status quo budget. So the purpose of this meeting is that to give you more time to look at this budget line by line, look at expenditures, look at, you know, potential revenue sources and see what it is that you'd like to do moving forward in, in preparation of the budget adoption on June 22nd. So as far as the conversation, you know, as far as the conversation is, as far as, you know, future plans beyond this budget, we're actually just focused on this budget at the moment. There are some questions that you obviously may ask about, you know, what you're looking to cut. If you want to cut anything, if you don't want to cut anything. If you think maybe the status quo budget is being too, you know, too ambitious and want to go back to maybe some of the other versions that we previously talked about, you can certainly have that discussion, but this discussion is actually to look at, to give you a, an opportunity to look at this budget line by line, the types of accounts we have, the type of expenses that we have and, and weigh in on that.
Okay. Could I say something? To go back to, before I make my general comments, I wanted to go back and ask Erin with regard to the water, as dire a situation as we're in, and I do like to say this, but, and I did watch the last council meeting and I did want to say that some of the ideas are very creative. They've come up, some of those ideas have come up before. They're not without controversy. And I want to know if you'd looked at possibly, you know, selling the water department. I hate to even say that out loud because I know that that would mean a rate, tremendous rate increase for the people in Westminster, but it would be, you know, like a one But it would be, you know, like a one time infusion of money. So I want to know if that is on the table with regard to what happened at the last council meeting.
I have not looked at that. I know it was looked at years and years ago. I've been here a long time, so I do remember it. But no, I have not looked at that.
Well, unfortunately, I think we're going to have to look at a lot of things. I wanted to say thank you to the staff. I know I've been sitting as chair of this committee for six years, and I just want everyone to know that we have a wonderful, wonderful staff that always is very thorough and gives us really good information. I am extremely disappointed that we're looking at a status quo. And I know that even that the issues that were brought up at the last council meeting, and and to echo what Councilman Manzo said, you know, all of that is going to be just fixing things around the edges. And he was very accurate in his assessment that the measure SS has kept us afloat. But right now, we are pretty much right back to where we were in twenty sixteen. And none, none of those things that that we, they talked about at the last council meeting really are going to be able to fill a seventeen million dollar hole. And I, going back to when I mentioned redevelopment, at that time, I mean, we lost one third of our employees. And we are not running this city as a city should be run. We should not have furlough days. I mean, we've let go of our part time employees. You know, we're losing police officers to other jurisdictions. You know, our police are back in the same spot that they were before we passed measure SS. We have mandatory overtime. That is a disaster waiting to happen when people get tired. You know, I mean, it's, that is just unconscionable, you know, and I wanted to just, you know, I walk my dog every day. So I want to tell you what the status quo looks like when I'm, where I'm walking my dog on the west side. This is every day. We have local parks with grass that's this high before it gets cut. We have gophers all over the place. We have RVs parked in driveways that people are renting out. How do I know that? Because there's all kinds of electrical cords going in and out of them. We have people that are renting or buying storage units, the big metal ones, like you see on the back ends of the trucks down at the port. And some of those have electronic, you know, are hooked up. And they're parked in driveways right on the front, in the front of people's houses. You know, we, there's a guy in my neighborhood has a Tesla, and he's parking on his grass that he hasn't watered for two years. So, you know, our city is going downhill. We're not at a status quo. That is really, really unconscionable. We need to be going forward, not backward. And, you know, I've watched all the meetings, and for us to be thinking and having to think about cutting more staff, that is a huge disservice to the people, the taxpayers of this city. I've lived here a long time, as long as probably most of you. And we are not going in the right direction. When I was on council, I mean, you know, all of the, I forget what they call them. We had, oh, they were gambling. What do they call them? Slap houses, I think. Anybody, please are in here, they can correct me. And they were mostly on the east side. Those, they're coming into the west side now. You know, I had, last week, there were seven police cars in my neighborhood parked around my driveway, because the house, three houses down, is day after day having issues. So I am saying, I am just so incredibly disappointed that you would even be thinking about the status quo. And I just want to say, you know, what Erin said, a couple of things at the beginning of the presentation that I absolutely have to reiterate. And it's this, on the sales measure SS, on that transaction, it tax. When that goes away for the city of Westminster, that doesn't mean that that's going to go away forever. The OCTA, you know, their measure M, the county, they'll put something on the ballot for homelessness. Measure M, by the way, for the OCTA is already out of money. And what will happen is, that'll get passed, and then we won't see one penny of benefit from that, because we will not have control of that, because we will have let our transaction measure sunset. So we're going to end up paying regardless. So that is very, very, very important. So, you know, as far as I'm, you know, you know, concerned, we're going to end up paying anyway. So, you know, I think we need to man up, as they say, you know, and do something to let the people decide. This is a democracy. We need to be able to decide. So you have, you guys are going to have yet another meeting. You know, and I want to go back. So I've got all my notes here back to twenty eighteen. I didn't bother before that. And at every single meeting, we as a committee have said how important it is to us as community members to, to please address this issue. And I think I speak for the committee when I say we, we just absolutely cannot go on the way we're going on. And like I said, I'm just disappointed and I hope, I just want you to do the right thing. And I want to vote, right?
Thank you for those comments, Commissioner Carey. I had a question about the, the county and the, and the, from what I understand is that, so there were, there's two percent out there, correct, that, that we, right currently, the state allows for transaction.
That's correct.
So we right now currently added that two percent with the current measure SS, we have one of the two, and the county.
The CTA has a half of that, so.
And if, and if, if Westminster does not, or the residents don't get an opportunity to, to vote if they want to continue that collecting that, the portion that we can collect. So what I understand, the county then has every right to just go ahead and take the whole full two, two percent?
Yeah, another organization or jurisdiction could come in and take it, yes.
There's a, there's a maximum of two percent, and they have already taken a half of a percent. So there's only one and a half available. It is possible to go above that, but that requires, and there are some limited jurisdictions that have done that, but they've gotten, gone to the state legislature to get them to up that amount. So short of going to the legislature to get them to allow us specific permission to go above it, we're limited by that two percent. So if they end up using it first, then we, we won't have that available to us. So right now, it's one and a half total that potentially is available, and we're using one, one percent of that at the, at the moment.
Yeah, so that was my point, is that if, if our city doesn't get what we're, what we can, I mean, there's some other jurisdictions come out and get it, so residents can end up paying that anyways, whether it's just a matter of, if we're going to, the residents are going to have an opportunity to choose if we get it. So, I mean, we think we need to make that point clear, that one way or another, a resident may be having to pay that, and it's just a big difference if we're able to survive as a city and choose to collect some of it ourselves. I think that's a big point. Their question has had is, I mean, I can just guess, since I spoke about just keeping the lights on. Ever since the measure SS went into effect, you said it was, we have been able to collect eighty one point five million, correct?
Correct.
And out of that eighty one point five, what have we been able to do with that money?
Could I, are you looking up something? Okay, good. Okay, great.
Of course, I can't find it right now.
It's okay.
So I will say this, and, and when, when the measure was adopted or passed originally, it was offsetting an already upside down general fund. So the first half of it, seven million dollars, went just to balanced budget. So we have been able to add some positions we've done. Shoot, I find that seven, and I think seven and a half million to street projects, like the million five I was talking about. We've done a total of seven and a half million for that. And, just a second.
So as you're looking at that, can I just kind of come back to what you were mentioning? Since we're looking at the status quo budget, now that I'm aware that we're going to focus on the status quo budget, the revenues have been, have to be pulled from the reserve to be able to pay for that. And what I was thinking about earlier was the question on the special projects and how the special projects are paying for certain projects, right? Like there are some for the parks, and there's money also that are specific to certain things. And I think right now, what Erin is going to do is come up with the list of things that measure SS funds have been paying for. And in some ways, it's kind of like a special project and a special fund and special revenues. And so I guess my question is, if that is, because the status quo is without that special revenue, is without that special project. And so I would assume that if there is a special project, for example, like the parks, or if the government decides to give money to the city for certain compensations or measure SS, that the, that the council members would be more than happy to take that money from the government, be more than happy to take that money from the state, be more than happy to take that money to be able to support the police officers. And I guess the question is, why isn't the city council willing to take, give the citizens of Westminster an opportunity to decide whether they want their money to also go towards, and I believe it was hiring police officers, hiring staff. It was also for fixing the roads. There was also several things that were presented. I remember the list, because I've been attending all these meetings. And Erin's done a fabulous job of showing us all the different things that it's been paying for, for the past six years. And so I guess my question is, since we're losing that, once you want, isn't that part of this conversation? Because the status quo, we're going to lose that money. I mean, right now, we're talking about the status quo, because we have half of the SS funds here, the taxes. But that technically is not going to be what's going to be happening next year, because we're not going to be able to include that. So once we want the city, citizens, the residents of Westminster, to be able to vote to decide whether they want to continue to have this tax, to be able to continue to receive those services. I'm asking.
Your name is Ruth?
Yes, Ruth Baker.
Let's try to figure out which one of the answer, which one to. Well, you know, I appreciate your questions and concern, but, you know, I went, when I ran in twenty eighteen, I understand the situation of the city of Westminster. The city need a major overhaul. You know, just like, you know, one story resident, and you apply for permit to have it's a two story unit. The first thing the planning commission would most likely question the foundation, okay? Can your foundation handle a two story apartment or residential area? So when I, when I first come to this council, first thing I want to do, we just want to fix the policy and procedure. It's a basic stuff, introduce a codes of ethic. And it's just a basic step, just say, every other city already have it, we don't. And asking for that trigger a debate for several months, and they end up with a recall effort, okay? And then a couple of years later, another recall. So the leadership of the city need to be fixed, needs a big change. And finally, after one and three years, we, I think that we have accomplished that. The city have new leadership, have new direction. And I think the foundation right now, this one, is set to really to go forward. You know, and we all know that we don't have a problem. Most people do not have a problem with making money. We have a problem with managing our money. To me, it's just like if the city continue to, the resident can continue to give the city the tax money, and that will allow this, this council to continue with infighting. Until we have a new council, a new setup, leadership in the city hall, given the city more money, we're not solving a problem, okay? I guarantee you.
It will. I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt.
Understand that with this, you will see the management of the city council continue infighting and try to grow their political career. Right now, this one, it's, it's a different direction now. It's time to move forward. I don't know what the council is going to do. But I, I believe that this, the city is set, the foundation is set for, to grow. Instead of live, just get the tax money to pay for the light, the light and the water. I know we need, we need to grow. We need to have, we have to have a unified council to sit down. And, and traditionally, the council is usually, council members are one of introducing programs or anything to move the city forward. That, that doesn't work too well. We need to allow the new leadership in city hall, introduce new idea, and the city employee, the have the ownership of the city and come forward with suggestions. Instead of city council or mayor are the one who introducing different program, and that's rarely happen. So I, I really, you know, the last meeting is a basic assemble of that. We have city employees, city staff, and then under the new leadership of our city manager, I come forward with an innovative way to generate revenue, and that's outstanding. That's a, that's a first step. And we continue to do that. We cannot depend on taxpayer to, to survive. I, I understand what you're concerned, you're right, without a taxpayer.
I think it's wonderful. I think it's great what you're suggesting. I think it's wonderful that you are getting together, that you're coming up with resolutions. I think it's great that you're really coming together as city council members and wanting to find new ways to move the city ahead. And I agree with you. I think that measure SS is, I think, what Vice Mayor Manzo talked about in terms of it's just leaving the lights on. But I think it's something that Mark Lawrence and I were just talking about, was that it's not one type of solution. We need multiple solutions. And I think you're absolutely correct. We do need leaders that are going to really think about, it's about how to move the city. But you cannot move a city if you don't have money to be able to make those moves. And you can't move a city if it's bankrupt and there's no money, and you can't move a city if it's being taken over by the state or by the county, or we're no longer overseeing ourselves. So you, I think it's wonderful that you guys would like to see the movie, move forward, because let me tell you, I think all of us would love to see changes happening in our city. We'd love to see, you know, reduction of homelessness. We'd love to see that the schools are thriving and their budget isn't being cut. We would love to see our roads fixed and not thinking, well, do they, are they really that broken that we don't, you know, do we really have to fix them to save some money? Do we need to cut, you know, and fire some of our staff members because there's not enough money? I think it's great. Don't get me wrong. And I know that there's a development project in terms of the mall, the Westminster Mall, and how that's growing. I think that's great. But I think it is a multi, multi facet type of approach, that you do need multiple ways to really improve the city. And you cannot make certain changes if there's no money, or if you actually are no longer leading the city. Because if we go bankrupt in two years, we're going to be taken over by someone else. So it's very difficult for me to sit here and to listen to you talk about how it's wonderful that you are meeting and you're having these fabulous new ideas. And yet, there's no money. I mean, if we can't pay our water bill, then what great, what, what useful? Or how can we actually take your ideas and move them forward if we're no longer a city? And so I think you're absolutely correct. I think we do need new leadership, and I do believe that we need leaders sitting at those chairs, such as yourself, that actually are going to be the ones, they're going to make changes. that actually are going to be the ones, they're going to make changes. Measure SS is one way. I am not saying it is the only way. I agree with Vice Mayor Manzo that it is just leaving the lights on. But at least we're leaving the lights on and we're paying for our own lights. And then we own our house. You talked about this foundation and this house. At least we own the house. The house that's falling apart, that foundation is ours. And if we want to build a second story, it is ours to build. It is the city, is the residents of Westminster that are the ones that are building that house. We are the foundation. And if you do not give us the opportunity to at least vote on whether we should be paying our lights, it doesn't really matter how many ideas you have. It doesn't matter all these different projects that are coming up because you won't have a house to be able to build. And I think that's really important. So as the status quo may be there, the fact that if we don't, if you are not, Westminster becomes incorporated with someone else, then you don't have a job and there's no house. There's no foundation. There's nothing for you to look at. And so all I'm saying is that it is important that we at least keep the lights on. We need to.
I, I understand.
On. And so I just think that it should be a decision of this residents of Westminster to decide that we would like to keep the lights on so that that way, the city council, all those great ideas and all those new projects that you want to be able to do, you can do them because the lights are on and we own our own home.
It's, this is not just happened overnight. It's been six years since we passed the Measure SS. As you understand, the issue was came up in twenty twenty during the general election. And you know what? Have you seen what the council done anything to change that? No.
I completely agree with you.
So I understand, I, I, I.
I understand what you're saying.
We need to convince the taxpayer that we are fiscally responsible. And we know.
So how are you showing that to us?
By taking away our seventeen million dollars by not letting us vote.
Well, the, the city have to prove to the taxpayer that we are fiscal.
Oh, we're very much aware right now that our city is falling apart, right? We're losing our house. In two years, we're not going to have a house.
If, if the taxpayer just give a blank check to our city and the city will continue to mismanage, it's, it's not going to work. So I appreciate, I appreciate your.
All I'm saying is that, all I'm saying is that there will be no house for you to be able to have these new projects if we don't do something to at least keep the lights on. And all I'm asking for is that the city council, again, to keep up with the status quo, right? Looking at this particular budget, that the city council allow the residents of Westminster to decide whether we should be the ones keeping our lights on or if we need to go somewhere else, let someone else can build our house for us.
Thank you. I appreciate.
You know, could I add something, just one, one thing to that? You know, it's, first of all, I take offense with the idea that the management of the city, our city employees, our manager, our treasurer over the past eight years have mismanaged the city. They have not. I mean, we are making the absolute best, or they are making the absolute best of doing what we're, what we can do. Our police department is not in any way, shape or form mismanaged. They are wonderful. But right now, because of our finances, all of our special units that we have are not doing special unit duties. They're out doing regular police work. And that is just wrong and it's shortchanging the city. So I totally agree that the city council has to get their act together. But that is a completely separate issue from reauthorization of Measure SS. And just to also kind of piggyback on what Ruth had to say. You know, it is not without consequences that you file for bankruptcy. Because what happens in a situation like that, and you go out back, we'll say to the county, I'm not going to go into all the detail. And you get a trustee that comes in and looks at your city. And they look at the income from the city as opposed to what it costs to run the city. And if your income from your sales tax, your property tax, whatever, doesn't, doesn't cover the cost of running the city, which right now ours don't because we're using our reserves. Then what they do is they take another assessment on top of all, all the property owners. So as a property owner, I'll be paying my property tax and an assessment on top of that to have the city go back to the county. So none of these things are without consequences. And I think we need to start looking at the consequences and, and looking ahead. I, they're, they're very dire. But gosh dang it, I want to vote. And as Ruth said, we deserve the right to decide what kind of a city we're going to have. And if the people decide that they don't want to renew that measure and we go down the tubes, well, then we put us there. But like Ruth said, we want to have the house. And right now, if you do not renew this, we're not going to have a house. And that's the very, very simple, unfortunately, reality of the situation. So I, I, I am, I'm just, I'm not going to say anymore because you're making me very angry.
I just want to think, I think Erin has the answers now, Dee.
I do. So like I had mentioned, it fixed a deficit and in the original year it was seven million. We also were able to fix some of our internal service funds, which we had been borrowing from. And that's when we, we've created that fund balance policy. So two million went to the fund, internal service funds. We hired two police officers, two part-time code enforcement officers. There were purse increases that we were able to cover. Some employee compensation, that was in the first year. And then after that, we did the street projects. We added money to our one fifteen trust account to like a savings account for our future pension costs and our retirees' medical costs that are going up. So we've been putting money towards that. And we've also been able to grow our fund balance by ten million dollars, which is actually what's helping us, you know, in the next fiscal year. So in sixteen seventeen, when it was approved, we had twenty million dollars in fund balance. And this year, we're projecting to end, actually more than that, thirty-eight million. So then after next year, when we use nine million, we're down to twenty-nine million. So still, still ten million over where we started before we had the measure.
Right. And another question is, how are we, when was the last time we did a cost recovery?
We do that with the two-year budget. So this is the second year of the budget, but we did it last year. And prior to that, we had done it, two years prior to that, and we recovered over a million dollars. So we do that every other year.
That, and since we had a council, we approved an increase for staff, the wages. So when, when is the next cost recovery? Because now we got to go through every single department.
Budget cycle. So with the next, so not twenty, two twenty-three, but twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four.
And does that also include the police department as well?
Correct. All position, or all services are reviewed with that process.
Okay. The other question I had is, I, from what I understand, that we've had a oversight committee, financial oversight committee over the years. Is, has there any been any ideas out of that oversight committee for revenue generation?
So actually, I was able to pull some of that. Cut lots of books, excuse me. So there was a report, it was called the City Financial Task Force, that was done back in May of two thousand and sixteen that went to council. And there were some of the ideas, very similar to what we're, what we're still looking at now. They had some, let's see, there's obviously the, the measure. It did mention the water utility. It says hire a campaign, communications firm, fiscal emergency, look at the business license inspection program, look at franchise fees, update utility, users' tax. But, but those are all, a lot of those are taxes and do take a vote. Certain fines, and we did do a review of all of our fines as part of the cost recovery review that we did a couple of years ago. So we have done that. It says increase citations. Let's see, fund balance policy, which we did. So a lot of, a lot of the recommendations staff has done and has brought to council.
And has council have been able to adopt or have gone with any of these recommendations?
And some of them were, were even included with what was brought to council last meeting with, with the marijuana or the, or not last meeting on that one. Well, I guess I did go last meeting. User fee update, this is another one, recreation fees. So yeah, staff has brought them and council has approved a lot of them.
And I know, I'm sure I get this answer. As you know, I mean, in my school, I thought is, so we got to tighten our belt, right? We got to look at every way, every avenue that we can save. And have you and staff have gone through, you know, department by department, line item by line, and see if this is a necessity? We have to have this.
And I've even gone line item by line item, and I've taken the difference. And we've, over the years, taken that away. If you haven't used it, if it wasn't spent, it was removed from the budget. We've looked at all of our contracts and staff's really good about if the service is less or it's not used. Like we did have a lot of savings during COVID because some of the services weren't being provided. Some of the recreation services and things like that were not provided. So it wasn't spent. It was, it was put back to fund balance. And that's partially why we're ending this year as well as we are. Because if it's not, if it's budgeted but not being spent, then it, it goes back to fund balance.
Yeah, I mean, it just, to me, is like, we got to just do our diligence and just look at every single thing that we can. I mean, I spoke about something that I, I really want staff to do is, I mean, I know some, for instance, I know that Midway, they've saved a lot of money going from gasoline powered vehicles to, I think they're using natural gas. And I think we need to take that same approach as far as where we can save money. And I, that, we need to look, as I mentioned, our last meeting is our vehicle use leasing. Do we really need this vehicle? Is, is, do we need to spend that money on that and then cut fuel costs? Because fuel, fuel is going through the roof and it's not, if it comes down, it's not going to come down as the way it used to be. It's going to just come down just a little. It's going to keep going up more than coming down. So I think we really need to look at every single line item that we can cut. And like you said, like I said earlier, if it's not a necessity, then, I mean, there's things that we might have on there that maybe we just got so used to using it and having it that we just, you know, do really need it. It's just, I know it's not going to save us, save us as a whole. I mean, seventy million is, you're not going to save, you're not going to save that by, you know, cutting vehicles or, or, you know, cellphone, whatever, any other expense that we, that it takes to run the city. But I mean, we, if it's a luxury, then we need to do without. I think it was something that we really need to look at to cut that. I mean, I, I know, I'm sure you've done your, your homework and gone through there with staff and gone through there. But I don't know, if you think that there's something else you can go through there and, and cut and really look at it. I mean, I, I, I hope maybe you can do that going through there. I think that's, I mean, I think that's all I got for now.
Mayor, council, committee members, if I may, because we're running out of time, if there are no actual questions on the budget itself. You know, we've indicated that the, absent a large revenue source, we will be in a fiscal crisis, as we've indicated over the last few meetings, whether it was, you know, our, our strategic planning workshop or our, our doomsday scenario that we presented back in March. And so the staff has looked at every possible way of, you know, of making reductions. The reality is, when we lost redevelopment funds, we lost about sixty million dollars that went back to the state. And it's really just been us in a rowboat trying to paddle with holes and we keep sinking. And that's just how it's been. Unfortunately, you know, absent, again, absent prominent economic development opportunities, absent, you know, a just larger revenue sources. I mean, we are predominantly a city of small businesses and low property taxes. So it is, you know, it, it's, it's already, the city is already functioning with a very lean budget. We did go through layoffs. We've made cuts. You know, a lot of us are actually paying for things on our own that if you were to go to a neighboring city, these are expenditures that, you know, things that city, cities would be paying for their employees. That being said, you know, we are lean as it is. We will continue to look for ways to, you know, to be efficient and find creative ways to generate revenue. Or not even creative ways to generate revenue, just very basic things that we've neglected to do for a long time. But the reality is, there is nothing that we can do quickly to close that gap. And so we're trying, based on the direction, we're trying to give the residents and the community the services that still deserve, that they deserve, which is why there was a push for the status quo budget. Because at the end of the day, two years of status quo puts us, you know, in bankruptcy. We are essentially delaying the inevitable. We did, staff did present two different scenarios that went with using reserves for half of the first year and the other one being implementing the cuts that we had presented with the doomsday budget. This is all intended to provide different, you know, a, a different look at how we would be functioning as a city. At the end of the day, we are down to, we are down to essentially bare bones with staff. We are down to essentially bare bones with equipment. There are things that we are looking at to move the city forward, but those things will take time for us to implement. And so, you know, again, the purpose of today's study session was to provide the budget based on what we would be, you know, what would we, what we would be spending without sacrificing the services that we give to our community. But if there are things that were glaring or things that needed additional information, things that you wanted to ask more questions about, that's what this purpose was essentially for, was for you to ask those questions. I know that, you know, members of the community recognize that the city does need a large revenue source, as we do. But this has been a struggle that the city has had for years beyond all of our times on the council here and, and in leadership here. So that being said, if anyone has any additional questions with this budget, this would be the time before we present to, you know, for you to adopt on the twenty-second.
Okay, may I speak? If you want to speak or I, I can speak after you.
What I was going to say is just, I think, I think what might be helpful to the discussion because I realize this, the solution is going to be multifaceted and multi-things as, as we've been discussing at the last council meeting, ideas to generate additional income, potentially to reduce expenses, that sort of thing. But I think the larger context is, has been discussed by a couple of people tonight is the city receives a very low amount of the property tax, and that's Proposition thirteen. We can't change that. Really, it's, it's virtually impossible to change that. That's not going to happen. After that occurred, cities began to look towards sales tax. And there was a big fight over trying to get big box retailers in, in order to generate more money for cities, to make up that difference. Some cities got them, some didn't. And then the state passed laws that limit your ability to try to pull those in from other jurisdictions. They tried to limit that. So a lot of cities looked to redevelopment, maybe as a solution, and including Westminster. And, and that became, the way to make up that gap in order to pay the proper bills, whatever the bills are, how do we pay those? What's the baseline of what you need in order to get by, as has been mentioned? You need to determine that and have a stable base to pay for it. After redevelopment went away, that created a huge gap. And again, people are looking to sales tax, but what has happened since then. And again, people are looking to sales tax, but what has happened since then is now we're, a lot of things are moving to online sales. And so, the problem with that is that we're, and I guess Aaron can speak to this. That isn't, in some cities, at least, it's going down because brick and mortar sales, the sales tax is 7.75%, and we only get 1% of that. That's if it's a, a sale that occurs within the city. The moment it becomes an online sale, it's a different calculation. And those numbers, and again, Aaron maybe can speak to that better, we're not necessarily getting all. So it's not as stable as it was in the past. It's not a growing source. In fact, it's a declining source. Those online sales are becoming more and more and more what we need to be looking to. The advantage of this measure SS is that it is 1% or 5, or 0.5% or whatever amount you set, the city gets 100% of that. It's a stable source. So again, I'm not advocating for it, but what I'm saying is, in the larger context of trying to create a stable local, secure, you know, I guess in a fiscally prudent manner, trying to create a stable income source for the city. As sales go online, we would collect 100% of that, whatever the tax measure is, for the city. And so a lot of cities are framing it that way as a, like a local stability measure. Because it really is. It's, that's exactly what it's doing. When, as sales go online, we'll be able to capture that. And anyway, so I just wanted to make sure that is out there so that we understand. There's property tax, that you're going to get sales tax for brick and mortar sales, which are declining. And then you have UUT, which is very small, TOT, which is also very small. But, you know, there's this opportunity for this and as a stable source in addition to whatever other measures you can to raising, raise, as we've been talking about, raise additional income. So I just want to make sure that's clear.
Yeah, you know,
May I speak?
Could I just say one more thing with what Christian is saying? I know in, I think it was in 2016, for the previous 12 years, our city had the lowest sales tax revenue in the county. I think it was 0.63%. So, you know, this 17 million that we've gotten has been a godsend, considering that, you know, our people are not, you know, buying things like they are, say, in other, in other cities. And I know even with auto sales, which are really important, a lot of folks now are leasing, and then we don't get the benefit of that. So just to kind of also piggyback on what Christian said.
May I speak? Yes, thank you. I, I did not miss, I came, I came walking in, but I started, I was on my phone and I could hear everybody. And I thank you for bearing with me. So I just want to say, first of all, is that I'm, I'm, I'm here, I'm speaking, and I just want to make sure everybody understands that I am not playing the blame game. I'm not trying to do that. So certain things I have to say might sound like I'm blaming, but I'm just kind of putting all the facts on the table. So first of all, I, I want to thank the SS measure oversight committee for being here. Thank you for your words and your explanations. First thing is, of course, we, we all have to deal with this one cent tax, you know, starting with even before I came on the council and from 2016, 2017 on. I believe that it was a mistake, and as I said, I'm just not trying to put a blame. I'm just saying that some of the things that came to mind would be, okay, a six-year sunset clause was, to me, is not realistic. I want, I want to also ask staff, rather than taking a guess, I can tell you what my guesses are, but I'd like to ask staff for, I'm at next meeting when we bring up the SS measure to talk about some more. I, and that would be in August, correct? Whenever. Okay, I'd like to know, all the other cities, surrounding cities, when they do have a sunset clause, what's the timeframe? Is it, is it 10 years, at 20 years? I know that there's one city that I know of, I believe Fountain Valley has a sunset clause of 20 years. And I believe another city has 10, but I can't remember what, and that could be my total imagination. But I just, I just can't remember the name of that city, if there is even one. But most of the the sales, or shall I say, these one cent tax or one and a half cent tax are permanent. And please confirm that and let me know so we can share that information with the rest of the council and the rest of our residents or constituents. So you know, for us, what we, what we have before us was a tax measure that was to sunset in six years, and six years is up December 31st, 2022, and that's this year. So, you know, what happened in the last six years? I, you know, I know that we've, as you know, pre-COVID, during COVID, post-COVID, we're still kind of, you know, trying to recover. And, and so I believe that that probably took at least three years of the six. And of course, it doesn't help with all the infighting, and I'm beginning to see the light at the end of the tunnel on that and that we are looking, we're seeing that we're, we are going to have a change on the council and that we are, you know, working together much better. And, you know, the one thing I like to say is, of course, I've, I've stated, and I, Christian, our city attorney stated earlier, is that it's really a multifaceted decision, and that is right. And so today, I was hoping just to make sure that we look at the budget and we make sure our budget is lean. And we do, we owe it to, and I, to our, our people, the ones that don't want the one cent tax. Or maybe they do, but that's just the right thing to do is, number one, is that we have to have a lean budget, make sure there's no waste. And I think I've said that a couple of weeks ago, when we, you know, speak on the one cent tax subject. And we talked about, you know, revenue. So I think we are generating ideas for revenue, of course, you know, bring more ideas on. And all those ideas are, should be vetted thoroughly. We're not going to reject ideas right off the bat because how would you know if those ideas are good or not good? And maybe they, some ideas appear good, may end up not being good. So I think those are the things that we need to do. And if there's anything else, I, I can only think of those two things. And besides those two things, we think of, you know, the, our staff, our executive staff. We already, you know, I think we're lining ourselves up to do much better in the future. You know, we already installed our permanent city manager, Christine Corden. We didn't want to stay with an interim position, city manager position, because we want to make sure we're, you know. And so I'm, I'm sure you don't need me to explain to you why we need a permanent, permanent CM. And so we're doing that. And just last week, we talked about zoning, zone change, and, you know, the different, we started with the zone two. And the most, I guess that would be the, the zone that makes the most sense for us to start with. And so that's going to give us more revenue and that we know that we try to, we are going to get money and more revenue, more tax dollars from our, like Westminster mall. And I know the mall has been a huge, I guess, it's been, it's taken a long time. And if, and I'm going to just mention some of the reasons why. I believe that because there are five owners of that mall, despite of the fact that it might look like one person might own the whole mall, but there are five. And so to coordinate with the five, it's difficult. And then on top of that, the people that were working from our city, that were working with those five are no longer here. So we almost have to start over. And then there's the post-COVID thing. So that's no one's fault. So I just want to say that we want to make sure we're doing the right thing and we want to make sure we're on our way to making plans, to bring in more revenue in the future. And I do see, all of those things are being done. The only thing that I, like I said, we shouldn't be facing this one cent tax measure today, or shouldn't be speaking on this subject. But because our council at the time in 2016 decided to sunset it for six years. And I realistically think that, you know, when you kick the can down the road, well, you are going to be facing it again. And that's why today we're facing it again. And so I hope that whatever it is we do, whatever decision we make in August, if it is not for the same reason, we don't want to just kick the can down the road and, you know, let other council members face the music when that time comes. And I think we have to be brave enough to do the right thing for our residents. And I think that it's really going to be, 14 and a half million dollars is a lot of money. And it's, it's a huge amount of revenue to be able to replace within a year or two. It does take time. It's like, you have to come up with an idea for revenue, like a business, and that business has to generate 14 and a half million dollars or even more now to replace the SS measure. So I think realistically, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't sunset. It should even be a permanent replace, a permanent thing. And I, I, I want to, I'm not saying that we shouldn't be deliberating on this today. And I know it was kind of sounding like we were kind of trying to, you know, lobby it a little bit. But I, I just think today is about the budget session, about making sure that we are to pass a very lean budget, that we are not wasting money before we could ask people for more money or ask people to extend the one cent tax and continue to give us the one cent. And so with that said, I, let me see if there's anything else. And I, I think I've, I've spoken to Christian, gosh, I'd say a couple of years ago. And I, I know you mentioned it again, and in case you all did not understand it or capture it. But if the SS, and even if I, if I'm wrong, please let me know, Christian. But from what I understand is that if SS measure goes away, the one cent tax goes away, we are not be, going to be able to capture our online sales. That's true. So this is how we are able to capture our online sales currently.
Just to be clear, if it's a brick and mortar sale within the city, we get 1% of the 7.25% sales tax. If it's an online sale, there's a formula. And so every city is, it's a little bit different. So the way it has been structured lately is, cities are, I know some cities are getting as much as 10 cents on the, on the dollar. With, it all depends on how, it's a really very complex formula. It's not really fair to cities. But it's not a secure source for us, as, as it would be if they actually made a purchase in the city. So if it occurs online, there's a formula. And Aaron, maybe you can speak to that.
I can. So if it occurs online, it kind of depends where the fulfillment center is. So if it's outside the state, inside the state. But it gets put into a pool and we get a percentage of the pool. And our percentage as our last allocation was 2.3% of the pool. So it's, it's all of Orange County in one pool, and then we get 2% of that. So because our Measure SS is growing faster, our transaction use tax is growing faster than the other, I believe that we're capturing more than of that. And, and part of that, and I think it went back to that decision with the, I believe it was the Wayfair decision. And that was a big piece of that as well. We're, we were originally capturing some of it, but now it all goes into the county pool and then we get a percentage of that. And the pool is split on our total allocation of sales tax as compared to other agencies. And that's why ours is 2.3%. So we don't get all of it.
So we get 2.3% of the county's pool. Right. So all the online sales are put together.
So, and, and some of that is, are some sales that don't occur in the city. But we don't really have any way of knowing, and I've tried to go business by business and see if I can figure out the difference. And it's, it's difficult because it does go into a pool. But that is our allocation of the Bradley Burn sales tax. It's 2.3% versus we get the whole amount from the transaction use tax.
So what I want to say in conclusion is that I believe we're doing everything we can. If we look at this budget and make sure it's lean and we continue to push forward and come up with more revenue ideas. I do believe that, you know, our payday is going to come because, you know, it's going to come in the near future, because we're doing everything right. That large revenue source will come. I do, I, I believe in that because it's, this is not a good, I, shall I say, you know, the, the post-COVID, pre-COVID era. You know, to be fair to our city, that's, you know, we're trying to help our small businesses pick up their, you know, get off, get back into business and, and, you know, get them to, you know, make a comeback. And I, I do, I know that there's some, there's revenue. I mean, remember, they are the backbone of this economy. So let's give them a chance and let's give ourselves a chance. And I think that in order for us to, you know, give our city a chance, I think we need to look at it as, again, tonight is not, today, I really don't think we should be talking about fighting over the SS measure, whether you, we should or shouldn't extend. But while we're on that subject, I'd like to say that, you know, for, for those who are running for office, I think that this is not a tax increase, but rather a tax just extending our, our tax, you know, to a later date. And if not, you know, permanently where it should be. So that's something that I'm, I'm saying that today because I just want to make sure I, you know, bring that up to discuss with, I mean, as something for my colleagues to think about. So that when the time comes for us to make our decision in August, that we will be ready to do so. We can't, you know, for sure, we should not let our city and our, you know, our city go to bankruptcy, and it's just hard to even say that, and can't let our constituents down when 70% of the people are saying, yes, they want to continue with our services. And if we cut anything, and we're, you know, if we cut into services that they want, then we're really doing a disservice to our constituents. And if, and I'm, I'm also saying it to myself, because if I run for office, you know, and it is also a reminder to myself that it is not a tax increase. Now, I think we want to bring back that chart. If I may ask staff, bring back that chart for August, whenever we speak about it next, when we make our decision. Now, we don't need to be, you know, we're not competing for the lowest sales tax. Because if we decrease sales tax, that would bring it down to 7.75, correct? Then, when that happens, then we're at the lowest, but what is, what, what's our price? We're going to go bankrupt. Okay? So that's just something for us to think of.
I'm sorry, I think there should be a clarification, because I think time is running out, so I just want to like,
Yes.
A couple of things, because I do have, I just want to clarify, and I know we keep coming back to Measure SS. And, well, first of all, it is very lean. It sounds like our budget is extremely lean. And I can't, and I haven't heard anything or any indication in terms of, I'm not really sure what you mean by pay date, in terms of what this huge revenues all of a sudden. in terms of what this huge revenues all of a sudden going to come in. And even if there is an increase in revenue, I don't think it's going to be the seventeen million dollars that is being brought in by the sales tax. And I also, so even when you were talking about the Westminster Mall, right? It's not five, it's seven owners, and they have to come together. And it's not, when they actually redo the mall, it's not going to be one year. It's going to be, you know, it's like you have to actually build it, make all the changes. It's going to be over a period of time. So it's, we're not going to see any of the benefits from that redevelopment. I don't know, I mean, I'm not statistician, I'm not a finance person, but I'm assuming it's going to be at least five years. It's usually what they talk about in terms of businesses. And so I just, I'm just concerned when I see the status quo, and I see that things are not, there's no additional revenue coming in. And I think that me asking the question in terms of the revenue is a legitimate question when we're looking at the status quo, because we are looking at this budget, and as you said, it is very lean. And I think that it's not about you deciding whether we should keep the measure SS. It's not about the city council deciding that. You shouldn't be deciding that. You should allow that decision to be of the residents. We should be the ones deciding whether we want to continue that and how we want to, what revenues we want to see coming in. And even if we do pass this, there is going to be a lag, because of the fact that it's going to, you know, even if we vote on it in November, there's going to be a slight lag that we're going to be concerned with. That's my understanding. And I also understand that the shipping costs are actually part of that revenue. When your order online, the shipping cost, part of that actually does come to the city, because I've paid a lot on those shipping costs. So there is potential for revenue to come in, and you keep talking about this payday, this amount coming in. And I'm not saying that there shouldn't be a deadline. I shouldn't, I'm not saying I should only, it should be ten years or twenty years. What I'm saying is that we need something for at least the next five years. And that gives the city council, hopefully, as, you know, our previous council member talked about how you're coming up with all these amazing ideas, those five years give you, gives you time to make sure that all your great ideas and your wonderful ways of improving our city can actually then see revenues and benefits from it. Yes, it was mismanaged in the past, I completely agree, which was a disservice to the city. And unfortunately, we're at the point where it wasn't managed very well. And so now we're stuck, and we're at the same place we were in two thousand sixteen. I completely agree, we're in the same place. The problem is that we're in the same place. And it's wonderful that you guys have these great ideas, but those great ideas mean absolutely nothing if there is no city of Westminster. And so all I'm saying is that this is very scary. And so the status quo, the decision, or part of the revenues, the decision should be made by the citizens, by the residents of Westminster. And the, the, your payday, there is no indication whatsoever that it is coming anytime soon. And there's no indication either of how much that payday is going to be in terms of the cost, and if it's actually going to meet the seventeen million. And as we look at the status quo, it's already lean, and this is a concern in terms of what needs to be done. And that should be part of every conversation, because anytime you look at a budget and you're already lean, the conversation should be about revenues. And if you have sources of revenue, if there's a potential for a source of revenue, it should be taken advantage of. This is an opportunity for the residents of Westminster to decide whether we want to pay that additional tax. But it is, it is an opportunity and is an option. And I think that the city council needs to take that seriously into consideration, because I like being a resident of Westminster. I don't want to be a resident of something else. So I just, again, want to clarify that talking about measure SS, because it is a source of revenue, it has brought in lots of money, is part of this conversation, and it should not be ignored or excluded.
Well, I, I think you misunderstood me when I, I think I was, I think I'm, we're on the same side here. So I am talking about, yes, we are doing the right thing, and is that right? But I hope you guys are all getting, my staff getting that impression, is what I'm saying is that we are on, you know, because of the hiccups, because of the, because of COVID, that's taken three years of, out of our lives and our, 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 I guess, three years of the six that we are supposed to dedicate into, you know, help build something. But I, like I said, revenue, that revenue, our revenue is, as long as we're lining up for future revenue, and it looks like we are, and I think I began, that's why I started listing some of the things we are doing to bring in revenue. It may not make it, it's not going to make it, it does take five years. And you're right, like I said, to, to, you know, to replace fourteen or fifteen million dollars on a whim, like you have no time at all, it's just not realistic. And I just think we are on the same page. And so I just want to say that, I mean, because today, I, I didn't think it was a day that we're going to make a decision, but it's good to hear from you, how you feel and all that. And I know that our, our constituents, our citizens, our residents have come out and said that. And that's why I said, we just want to make sure we do the right thing. And as long as we think that this is the budget that is lean, then we should, I'm telling my, my colleagues that we should, you know, move along. And in August, we should do the right thing when we have to vote on the SS measure. So, thank you.
I, I want to bring up, I think, because I've heard it a couple of times, and that is, when we're talking about the mall project, you know, those coming in and getting done, or Westminster Boulevard's specific plan, or Little Saigon, and let's say we do get a lot of new structures in there. Those properties' values will go up, and we will get property tax from it, but it's still going to only be seven percent of the one percent property tax. So what we're talking about is bringing in a lot of new housing, but only collecting seven percent on a one percent. So that's another issue that really needs to be addressed. And I think, I'm just throwing this out there so that you're aware of it. We really need to look at development impact fees, and before these projects are built, so that these developers, when they build these projects, are actually paying for the people that will be coming into Westminster as new residents, paying for the services. Otherwise, we're going to be stuck making the problem worse. We're going to only be collecting seven percent of one percent on the property tax. So I'm, I'm, I just want you to be aware of that. That's something in my mind that really needs to be examined. How much we're putting out there for development impact fees, or making sure that these projects pay for themselves.
Well, I want to mention about that is that the C, what is that? Community Development Director, who was it before the last one, what's her name?
Alexa.
Alexa, before Alexa, that was Chad, or, yeah. So Chad was really the person, the go-to person on the mall project. And then after that, when, when he left, and, you know, this is all within the last two years. When he left, then Alexa took over. And I know when I had the conversation with our, with Alexa, not only, I, I know our city is being very careful, you know, when working with the seven, thank you for correcting, correcting me there, the seven owners of the mall, seven pieces, that we don't want to just make it all property, right? We want to make sure that there's sales tax coming from that project. So that's why I was very, I mean, I was glad that we were very careful at selecting or repurposing the mall, and not just turning that into a huge, high-density housing project, so that it's going to still, you know, we're watching out for our tax, sales tax dollars. So I know that was something that we were very careful to do, to make sure we, we, you know, get a piece of, you know, large revenue from the sales tax from the mall. And so you're right, if we're talking about just property tax, it will be seven percent of one percent. That's not a lot. There's nothing, not much we can do about that, if it's going to be turned into housing. Thank you.
I have a question, since we're supposed to be talking about our budget. We spoke about a lot of those other special revenue sources. And in order first to, to be able to get those revenue sources for streets, for parks, for instance, if we don't have the matching funds, then we'll be, we're going to risk of losing those special revenue sources, correct?
Not, not all of the special revenues require matching funds, but I think some of, a lot of the street projects and capital projects do require matching funds. So if we didn't have that, then yes, we wouldn't be able to apply for them.
So along with not being able to, to really progress our city, we'll be losing the little resource, little help that we do get from outside resources. So not having, you know, the revenue, the sources to be able to do those matching funds, our city would, I mean, the hurt would be tremendous. I mean, be able, not be able to pave our streets, not be able to, you know, upgrade our parks or whatever it may be, you know, we'll be, our city would look really very bad, very dire. So, thank you.
By Samir. Just to add to that conversation, like Aaron stated, it is actually a requirement in many cases when receiving funds, grant funds, that you are mandated to a certain percentage. Most of the time, it's no greater than twenty-five percent, but as you can imagine, if you're improving medians, and every mile of a median project, let's just say it's five million dollars, twenty-five percent of that would be required to move forward with that grant.
We would see less projects, less, less upgrades and less maintenance on our roads and all that. Okay. Thank you.
Aaron, while, while you're, while you're here in front of us, can you give us an, a kind of a look ahead to what is next as it pertains to the budget?
Sure. As it stands right now, unless council requests any changes, this budget would be brought back at the next council meeting, so the June twenty-second meeting. We'd need to have it approved. There's a number of resolutions that go along with that to allocate the budget for the next fiscal year.
All right, so I think there's some more. We don't have any other comment or any questions, so I'm going to adjourn the meeting. So the next meeting will be on Wednesday, June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two, at seven PM. You know, John.
Thank you all for, members of the committee, thank you for being here, I appreciate it. Thank you, staff, as well.